November nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. First item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from November fourth and seventh, two thousand and thirteen.
Move approval of November fourth, uh, minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
And move approval of November seventh, two thousand and thirteen minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. The future meeting dates. We're meeting on the twenty-first, Emery?
Yes.
Which is?
Thursday.
Two for this week.
Two this week, okay. And then December third, tenth, and seventeenth.
Okay. And those are Tuesdays, right?
Yes.
And this is mainly because we have a lot of budget items to?
We have to get all the budgets down to the Warren Committee.
Right.
This will be done by December first.
Okay. All right. Number four on the agenda is citizen speak. Anyone here for citizen speak?
I'm Margaret Donovan, forty-one Central Avenue, and this is a change of venue for me.
I'm sure you're at the right meeting?
I think I'm at the right meeting, right. I'm here to speak on the item that you're going to discuss under number six, which is the bid for the town-owned land on Central Avenue. But first, before doing, before getting into my remarks and my concerns about that, I just wanted to clarify about the meeting that a member of the selectmen has participated in along with three or four other people with the Conleys since probably the early, late spring, early summer. And that started with a meeting at Brian Joyce's house. I think, people think it was just a select group of people, handpicked. It was not. People from Precinct Two were invited, and of course, people from Precinct Two most impacted by the, by the one thirty-one Elliott Street and the Zero Central Avenue. So, the meeting was at high noon on a Sunday, and Brian Joyce was the host. There are about thirty people there from the neighborhood, and after two hours of discussion, I frankly asked Brian what he wanted from this meeting, and he said, well, he thought that if we had a small group of people meeting with the Conleys, that we could push this project along, and he-
Margaret, I missed, when was this meeting? I missed that.
It was in the, it was in the spring of the, the summer.
Okay, all right.
Because I think Mr., Mr. Hurley was the first select person to attend those meetings.
Yeah, I did not attend that one, though.
You didn't, you didn't attend them? All right.
Not at Brian Joyce's house.
Okay, all right. Moving along, after, this went on for about two hours, and so I made the motion that this group approved the small group committee meetings with the Conleys to see if we could put, push this project along. And so, a small group was selected. Mr. Whiteside was one of them, a member of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Joyce, and Peter Mellon, and I think Cheryl Taguyis. I was, I didn't include myself. And so, that's how the meeting started, and it wasn't as a select group, it was people from the neighborhood had, who had agreed, who had, who had attended that meeting and who had agreed. The vote was about twenty-eight to two to go along with this program, and the two dissenters backed, it was overwhelmingly supported by the neighbors in Precinct Two. My, my concern about the neighborhood is somewhat personal. I recall when my father had, had a shack, shack, I call it a shack. It wasn't a shack, it was a portable office that was located on the edge of what is now the MBTA parking overhang. And it, he had two cabs from Milton, and they, anybody could get off the T and go into the office and telephone call, if there was a cab out there, they would, they could get one by making a phone call. This was in addition to a number of cabs, that he had a Mattapan Squares as well as his limousine business. So, I remember sitting on that wall at Henry's, eating an ice cream cone. I remember that portable office. I remember the house that I live in now, when it was purchased by my father from John Shields, the chairman of, not the chairman, excuse me, the chief of police, when Thirty-Six Central was the location of the police station. So, my host, which may, some of you may be familiar with, at number forty-one Central, used to have two limousines on the first floor and one up in the back, and that's where he had his, his cabs parked. A great deal of business was done down at Steel and Rye, but it wasn't Steel and Rye. It was William O'Hearn's Plymouth Chrysler dealership, a very active business. So, there was a lot of connection, particularly with my family, in, in that location. With regard to the number of meetings, and there were two years of meetings with the planning board, as you know, with the Conleys, they never moved from day one to provide the, the backup, the information that the planning board required. They did not move at all. Occasionally, we would go to the meeting and there would be a postponement, because the Conleys had asked for a postponement. This went on for two years. Now I understand, they're doing the same old, same old again. And so, I think it's time for the town, the town has been reactive in many occasions, as opposed to being proactive. For example, Thirty-Six Central should have reverted back to the town, but for negligence on the part of the town in allowing it to be sold to Paul Sullivan and, and Michael Roberts. The town is now paying a huge price for the rehabilitation of a firefighter, because the town did not have the foresight to purchase the appropriate insurance. The town paid a huge sum for a civil rights lawsuit, where unfortunately, a black man was waiting to pick up his daughter, and he was arrested as though he were stealing the house out. It just seems a shame that we're always just reacting instead of coming forth with a plan, foreseeing what should be. Thirty-Six Central had, I did, not that I had, didn't have other things to do, but out of curiosity, I counted the cars in there, when that was a parking lot. Forty-seven cars packed there every day. Some MBTA snitches, but mostly, they were the merchants and the clients of the merchants in the area. Right now, parking is a nightmare in that small business district. And the two businesses that are attached to Thirty-Six Central, their customers are supposed to pack in the back. They don't. They're right on the street, competing with the plate, the, the wine shop, and all the other businesses in, in the area. It is a nightmare. What would be a good resolution to this, since the town gave up a parking lot at Thirty-Six, turning, turning the parking, turn Thirty-, One Thirty-One Elliott into a parking lot? Just a suggestion. Take the town by, take the lien by eminent domain. Not done before? Yes, it has, yes, it was. In nineteen fifty-six, the city of law did just exactly that. So, I am hoping that, anticipating that you are going to reject that ludicrous insulting bid, which the Conleys proposed, and that you consider future steps, maybe eminent domain. It is unfortunate that this town did not approve the Community Preservation Act, because then it would have, it would start to collect funds to do just exactly that. So, in your discussion tonight, I am looking forward to hearing, and I know that neighbors are, and you have quite a following on TV, in case you don't know it, because when I'm out there raking leaves, they're asking me, what's, what's going on, and so, I'm here to say, well, they want to know from you what's going on, and so, would you please discuss the status of the demolition order? People walk down there to go to the trolley, and frankly, if it's a windy day out, I cross the street. I don't want to be there when something comes down on my head. What happened to the funds that the town earmarked for the demolition? And is the town going to demolish that building? Or just sit, are we just going to sit on our hands? So, would you consider, when you discuss this, numbers, and number six, would you discuss what you're going to do with that outrageous bill? Where you're going to go from there? Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. We will be discussing it in-
I beg your pardon?
We will be discussing it in number six on the agenda. Thank you. Anyone else for citizen speak? Okay. Move on to number, number five, which is the Milton Arts Center lease agreement. And at this point, I'm going to recuse myself from this meeting. My wife teaches yoga at the Milton Arts Center, so I'm going to step out of the room, and Tom, as a secretary, will take over.
Sure. Thanks, Emery. Go on, you want to talk?
Thanks for having us today.
You're welcome.
I want some of our board members to come on up and introduce, so that you can meet them also.
Sure.
And also, I have, I sent this, but these are some copies that the board members have. You may pass them on to our, the financial-
Profit law statement?
Exactly.
You'd be given a chance to look at it.
And also, a letter.
Oh, you got a copy? Okay. So, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes. Yes, okay. Hi, I'm Maureen Peterson, Maureen Cronin-Peterson. My uncle is John Cronin. And I've lived in Milton with my husband and four daughters for about twenty-five years. And I'm just coming today as a supporter of the Milton Arts Center, and, and I thought I just would share how I got involved, and I'm a volunteer on the Board of Directors for Milton Arts Center. And I got involved because I'm, I really just believe in the mission, and I'm also, was very impressed with the leadership, the foundation of the Arts Center. Living in town for so long, you know, if there's a hole or to fill, or something's not being done, you know, a lot of people might complain about it, but, you know, this is a group that just stepped up and said, you know, let's see what we can do, let's have a place to celebrate the arts. And since I've been involved, it's, it's just amazing, because the programs, they're available for all ages, and it really, it's in, a place to showcase the amount of talent in, in Milton. The art gallery, when they put up shows, it's just, you know, you walk through there saying, this is, it's just beautiful. It's a beautiful spot. And I'm not an artist by any means, but I'm taking a flower arranging course, and there's, my kids are grown and college age, but we've collaborated with Milton Chamber of Commerce and Milton Garden Club and the Senior Center, and have brought special events into the space. And I think it's really very impressive that we are sustaining ourselves, you can see by the financial report from two thousand and twelve. And I joined the board because I have experience with board development and fundraising, and we have a very strong fundraising committee, and the potential for that space is just unbelievable. So, I thank you for letting us come and speak to you today, and I just think it's been a wonderful addition to the town.
Thanks, Maureen. Could I ask the other board members just to introduce yourselves? We, this will be short, we'll just-
My name's Christine Shuttle. I'm a member of the board at Delaney and Milton for about eleven years. I have four children, and I'm just really honored to be asked to be a member of this board. I think it's a wonderful addition to the town, a great use of that building that was empty, and, you know, a small organization like this really needs a little bit of time to get legs and put a fundraising plan in place, and, you know, grow to its full potential, so we-
You can actually sit, so we can hear you on television.
Oh, or talk. Well, that's all. It's just-
Yeah, no, just that, you know, it's, it's been wonderful so far, but it does take a little time to get, you know, now that we have five oh one C three status. I think that we can really begin, you know, a, a strong effort to do an annual appeal, and, and that will, you know, give us the legs to really make an impact in this town and be, you know, a positive force in Milton. But it just takes a little time, so we are just, you know, asking for the town's support until we get to that point. Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm Kevin Danbrook, I'm on the board also. And just, just a couple of words. Joan and I moved into town about twenty years ago, maybe eighteen years ago. At the point, that building was Branch Library, and it was a nice, nice part of the community. It's a great location in town, and, you know, the kids would go to the downstairs children's library and be able to get books and videos and all. And it was also a place that the rest of the community could go and, you know, sit down and read the paper. It was just a nice spot and a good location to be a welcoming part of the community. And I think we see ourselves as evolving into a continuation of that, as well as offering, you know, the education, the art education for kids and adults and seniors, and a gallery space for all the talented artists in town. And, you know, we, it's a volunteer organization, the teachers do get paid for classes, but we have a strong group of volunteers that have contributed. I think we calculated somewhere close to eight thousand hours of their time and energies and talents for the benefit of our community, you know, to bring this place and this, this bonus that the town can share and participate in, on whatever level they, they choose to do so. So, and, you know, with, it's growing all the time. Just in the past week, we had about a dozen people volunteer their services to join the group and to, you know, step up and take part and join different parts of the organization. So, it's a thriving, growing organization that we think brings a lot of benefit to the town, and we just hope that the town can continue to support us in whatever way they can. You know, we're just helping to bring arts into the town for, and for all the community to share and use for other, for other organizations as well and other events. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin Tenell Croninger. I'm a member of the board, and I got involved with the Milton Arts Center because I actually, I'm a graphic designer and I'm also a painter, and I spent a lot of time down in Marshfield at the Arts Center down there. And when this came about, I thought it was great that finally Milton has an Arts Center, because so many towns have Arts Centers, and it was kind of lacking here. And I volunteer a lot of time, as, as everybody on the board does, just simply because I think it's a great thing for the town. It's a lot of hours that we all put into this, and it's simply just for the town. My kids are in high school and college, so it's not, I don't have little kids. I just think that this is something for the community, and we just need, we need a little time to, to grow. Some of the Art Centers in other towns have been there for years, and some of them get a little more of a break on their rent, or sometimes it's free. But people realize that it's a benefit for the town. I mean, it's just to have a cultural center or an Art Center in a town is important, and it might not be bringing a lot of money for the town right now, but it's simply a really nice place for the town to have a, somewhere to go, like there's adult functions, there's kids' functions, and we don't have a spot like that in town. So, this place has so much potential, and it's a happy place, and I hope we're able to continue it. You're welcome.
I must say, you, people should all be commended for your volunteerism. Yeah, I, I've seen the work that the Arts Center does, and it does wonderful work, has great programs, like, you know, a little bit familiar with, you know, some of the things you've done with the Chamber of Commerce, and it is great, and you are an asset to the town. You do fill a need, and, you know, we want to be as supportive as we possibly can, so, you know, that's one thing I, I just want to let you know. That being said, I did look at your two thousand and twelve financial statement, or actually it was just an income, and it was just a profit law statement, and you did have a few fixed, you know, one-time costs in there, like the five oh one C three and, you know, some legal expenses that was probably somewhat related to that. You know, even if you knocked that off, it was clear in two thousand and twelve, you could not have paid the, the increased rent, there wasn't enough money there, but, but you're right, you were at least covering your expenses and, and, you know, with a little bit left over, not a lot. So, two thousand and thirteen, how does, how does thirteen look at this point?
Well, we, because of the five oh one C three, we, we are just actively now fundraising. So, that's why we need at least six months to, to get traction, to get going on raising funds, because you can see from the charts, only one percent of the money that we brought into the Arts Center last year came from donations, and that is a number that we are really hoping to expand.
Joan, what's the plan for the fundraising? You mentioned an annual appeal. When might that be held?
We're hoping for really soon. We're, we are actively, I would say within a few weeks, actually, we're hoping to get it up, um, by the end of November, actually. So, yeah, that's, we also have a new website coming up, and we also plan to do online fundraising, and that's all part of the plan, too.
Yeah, Joan, do you have anybody on your board that is familiar with the fundraising, you know, fundraising activities, and-
Yes.
Is there anybody proficient? Because it is, it is an art form in itself, I know.
Absolutely.
Oh, it is, and because, because we are all volunteers, I've been on a board for Boys and Girls Club for twenty-five years, and when I first went on it, we, we were grassroots. We were like the Milton Arts Center. And we, I know the Arts Center, we're going to write a resource development plan, we, there's the potential for us to receive grants for the arts. It's unbelievable, it's unlimited, and even individual gifts. We know there are people in Milton who would financially donate to a Milton Arts Center. So, we have volunteer grant writers, and we have a fundraising committee of people like myself who have done it, run special events, but we really, I mean, I, ideally, we would have some paid positions. We, and, so we're not even at the point where we can pay salaries, and I appreciate you acknowledging, you know, we've come this far on volunteer hours. And, but we do, we continually have new people sign up, we're going to have a really strong marketing committee, and so, right now, it's board subcommittees, you know, we're just stepping up and, you know, ideally, we'll have a director of resource development, you know, down the road, who also does grant writing and, and pay a full-time executive director position.
Have you ever thought about reaching out to Kari, perhaps?
We could.
That'd be an idea.
Right.
You know, they, they are pretty generous in terms of volunteering their time for various efforts, and-
Yeah.
This would seem like one right up their alley, really was.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah.
I just would echo what Tom said, we certainly want to be supportive and help as much as we can, and we have to balance that against the fact that it's, the building is a town resource, and we're concerned always about money for capital projects and money for operating budgets. Since our last meeting, well, not our last meeting, but a meeting, what, about a month ago, Emery?
Yes.
You and, and Joan have met and-
In an effort, in an effort to try to work with Milton Arts Center and make work for the town and for the, the center. Joan and I did meet, and we tossed around an idea of maybe a shared space with one of our town departments that is in need of, of a home. And Joan and that director of consolidated facilities did meet, and they toured the facility, and unfortunately, it, it's not going to work for what the departmental needs are and what Joan's needs are for the center. So, we did, we did try to bring something together, and it just didn't, unfortunately, it didn't work for us.
And we've, we've at least discussed a little bit, we have no problem again deferring another six months. I would, one proposal I might throw out is, we'll keep it at the five hundred for, for the next six months, and then that, that rent that's not being paid, the thousand dollars, basically a thousand dollars a month, if we cut it in half, in other words, forgave half and deferred half, in other words, tack the other half onto the end of the lease, to give you time to, to get that fundraising effort up. I mean, I think that's a little of both.
Yeah.
So, the balance is, so we're really talking about three thousand, right? Because the balance for the rest of the year, if you had to pay the full rent, would be six thousand.
Six thousand, right.
So, we'd be, what Tom's proposal is to write off, or reduce it by three thousand dollars for the rest of this year, which, the current lease expires in April.
April twenty fourteen, right?
Yes.
In the current year, and then, so Tom, you're proposing that we tack on three thousand to the back of the lease.
The years, maybe the last three years of the lease. So, a thousand a year for the last three years.
Yeah.
Which would essentially be a reduction, because we've already-
Yes.
Reduced it for the first six months. It really would be a nine-month reduction-
Right.
-in, in the current lease year, by the five hundred dollars.
Yeah. And other than that, I, I-
I, I think that's, it gives us the breathing room that we were looking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, just keep up those efforts to fundraise and-
Yes.
That's what-
No, thank you for your support, then.
I would encourage you to stay in touch with the town administrator, because I think, you know, Emery may have some ideas, you may have some ideas about different people, different-
I mean, we could-
Art programs or other services that you might be able to bring in as a subtenant, or as, or as maybe teaching another class, or something that might, and Emery might have some other ideas about use of the space. Because I think our concern really is just balancing, you know, wanted to, we want to support the arts, but we also have to wear our financial hat and be concerned about the cost of the building down the road, which was the intention entering into the lease, that the town, you know, it's a valuable resource, and we want, the idea was to have the lease really pay for maintenance costs of the building.
Mm-hmm. No, we welcome, you know, a back and forth all the time, and I'm sure there are things, you know-
The conference room, and we talked maybe with the-
Yeah, we thought maybe some meeting room, if, if you have boards and they need meeting space. And it's just, the classroom space is the bottom level, and then upstairs is gallery space. So, we are really utilizing the whole building, but, but certainly, there are events that we could host there, and I know we're having a retirement party for Ann McIntyre there, and that's going to be lovely, and, and, yeah, everybody's welcome to come, and my girls had her as a teacher, so it's, you know, those kind of things, we want it to be a community center, so a center for all ages- center for all ages and everyone's welcome. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the center does have one other item that they want to talk to the board about?
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to bring that up tonight.
Yes.
Oh, you do, okay. You'll see a letter from Leslie, well, actually, one of our members, Leslie McGuini, proposed an idea for using the East Milton tree to have children make ornaments and hang them on the tree and unfortunately, this idea came a little bit too late for it to go in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. Ideally, we'd like to work with them next year to have it happen together, but she wants to have, she wants permission from the town to hang ornaments on the tree. The materials are stated in this letter. They are, they're safe. This is a program that has run in Dorchester for many, many years by Dot Art and it's been successful there and Leslie, who's driving this program, really feels strongly that this would be a great community event for the town of Milton. And again, we welcome the town to join us in on this because it really, it's being planned actively right now. There's, there's no, you know, we welcome you, okay. All right, so that's what we need permission for is because we have to hang them and is that?
Yes, that's correct. The children will make the ornaments on December 7th.
So I think we need a combined motion, right, to amend the lease?
Yes, we do.
All right, so I'll move that we first grant permission for the Milton Art Center to hang ornaments made by children on the tree at the, on the East Milton deck and that we amend, well, when we do them separately.
Yeah, once, yeah, okay. So I will second that motion. Any further discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
All seen and heard.
That's nice.
All right, I'll move that we amend the lease for the Milton Art Center for a space at the East, the former East Milton Library to reduce the current year's rent by $3,000, is that correct?
Yes.
And to defer payment of $3,000 rent until-
Final three years of the lease.
Final three years of the lease.
One thousand.
Pro rata.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Good news.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for the fundraising on your activities.
You're invited to do it also.
Maybe get some Carolers out on the deck, too, once you get the-
I know.
Good.
Thanks.
All right. Dennis back in here.
Everybody survived? Good. The next item on the agenda is number six, which is a discussion on the bid for the town-owned parcel of land on Central Avenue and I am going to read a prepared statement on this, the piece of land that the town owns next to the Henry's Building. In August 2013, the Milton Board of Selectmen issued a request for proposal, which is also known as an RFP, for sale of the town-owned Milton property at Central Avenue and Elliott Street, sometimes described as Zero Central Avenue. The deadline for submission of proposals was October 7th, 2013. The minimum asking price was 240,000, which is the appraised value of the property. The property would be sold with the following conditions. Number one, the property would be restricted against any use not authorized or zoning, by zoning or with the express consent of the selectmen and the planning board, by a variance issued by the Board of Appeals or by special permit issued by the planning board. And two, if the property were to be combined with the abutting parcel, the combined site shall be developed by a special permit under section 3J of the zoning bylaw, which is also known as the Planned Unit Development Bylaw, the PUD. The existing structure shall be demolished within 60 days of the closing and the property shall be developed by the purchaser or his successor as a mixed-use development with a minimum of 4,000 square feet of street-level retail, commercial use, and substantially permitted within nine months of the purchase and sale agreement. We received one proposal in response to this RFP. Carrick Realty Trust proposed to purchase the property for the sum of $1,000. The proposal was effective for 180 business days, subject to two conditions. Number one, the signing of a mutually acceptable purchase and sale agreement. Number two, the issuance of a special permit by the Milton, by the Town of Milton Planning Board, authorizing the submitted proposal by November 30th, 2013. The Board of Selectmen attempted in good faith to reach an agreement with Carrick Realty Trust. The negotiations were extensive and difficult. Board of Selectmen extended the time to award a contract from October 31st, 2013 until November 12th, 2013. Ultimately, the parties were unable to agree upon a purchase and sale agreement, which the Board of Selectmen felt was consistent with the RFP and in the best interests of the town of Milton. That's the end of the prepared statement and I will open it for discussion.
I think that pretty much says it all in terms of the request proposal, you know, else can you say? You know, hopefully there will be another use for that parcel of land, but, or hopefully eventually it will be developed as a mixed-use facility, but time will tell that. I don't know if we want to at least discuss a little bit the potential demolition of the site or not. I know that was asked at Citizens Speak and, I mean, I suppose we can at least say that the Connlys have come forward and expressed their desire to remove their portion of the building, provided that the town remove its portion of the building and I believe the town is willing to do that. We'd have to raise the money again for it, but-
Right.
So it would require a special town meeting and the appropriations of money.
Margaret Donovan asked earlier, where the money we had appropriated, where did that go, Tom?
That was in the reserve fund that sits with the Warren Committee, so once the fiscal year ended and we were unable to reach an agreement with the Connlys to take the building down, it just reverts back to the general fund again. So it's part of the free cash number.
So it wasn't spent?
It was not spent, no.
Right. I think it's important for the public to know, too, that, you know, these meetings we had during the summer, we're on Sunday mornings, it's tough to meet on Sunday mornings in the middle of the summer, it kind of ruins your, your summer, but we did have a lot of people meeting and Alex Whiteside from the planning board was there, myself, Senator Joyce, Cheryl Tigheas, who's a local architect and who put in a Trojan amount of work in doing pro bono plans that the neighbors and the public may be amenable to. Peter Mullin, who's also a neighbor, gave some really valuable input on traffic studies down there. He was requesting traffic studies. Emery Fager, our town administrator, was there, as well as Jerry Connolly. I think it's important to know that, you know, what you said earlier, Margaret, about the planning board requesting a lot of information that wasn't given to them, kind of frustrated the planning board. None of us realized how frustrating it was until we had to deal with it, to be quite truthful. And the first meeting we had arranged to meet, the developer failed to show up. Now, that's a Sunday in the summertime. It's unfair and it's disrespectful, I think. You know, I have a family that I could be spending a Sunday with. When the developer fails to show up, it's, it's just disrespectful. We managed to get it back together, we put plans together and everything seemed to be going well, but we just reached an impasse on, on how we were going to transfer this property to them. Starting with the $1,000 bid, when the minimum asking bid was 240,000. Yes, we were able to work something out, but again, I just think it's important for the public to know that we did work really, really hard on this deal and maybe at a later date, we'll get into more of a discussion on it, as you mentioned earlier, Katie. Maybe we'll arrange another meeting where we can discuss it in more detail. But here we are, we're at an impasse and I don't, we have to look at alternatives now for that.
I just want to get out, I mean, you know, because I don't want to paint the picture of the Connlys as being the bad people in this. They're businessmen, let's face it. I mean, they're in, they're in the game to make a profit and they should make a profit. They've taken a substantial amount of risk. I understand that.
But we're in the business of protecting the town.
We're in the business, yeah, and they're, you know, they're different interests, obviously. They're, they're opposing interests to some degree. You know, to some degree, they're, they come together and if something gets billed as more tax revenue and that isn't in the best interest of the town. But, you know, we were close on an agreement, but we couldn't quite get there and there was some give and take on both sides, but it just wasn't quite enough and, and the board just didn't feel that it was in the best interest of the town to go forward.
And I think, Tom, you should be commended because you, you kind of took over the negotiations at the end there and you, you put in a lot of effort and a lot of time to try and get it across the line, but-
Yeah, I'll second that, Dennis, and actually, I would thank both of you because as the former chair, Tom, and Dennis, you, in the earlier summer months as the chair, engaged really firsthand in the discussions with the Connlys and Emery Fager, our town administrator. So all of you've spent an awful lot of time in face-to-face meetings and discussions and we certainly had a lot of our own meetings, but, you know, just, just to echo what's been said, we have a fiduciary obligation to the town to do what's in the town's best interest and we did have some extensive discussions and we just haven't reached an agreement. So we are where we are right now and-
Pretty much it.
So-
And the demolition is probably the next step that we need to talk about.
Exactly.
Right.
And we may want to have Joe Prondak or have a meeting with him to go over some of the issues or Bill Clark or whoever else might be appropriate.
It is in the best interest of, of the town to have both buildings taken down as soon as possible, before something happens. Okay, we'll move on. We have a motion on this?
Well, that's the, I guess we, so we do need to act on-
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to reject the bid received from Carrick Realty Trust for the purchase of the town-owned property at Zero Central Ave.
Second.
Motion was made in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number seven on the agenda is the approval of the Peabody Fund Grant for Christmas Gifts. Emery, would you, would you tell us what the Peabody Fund is?
It's a fund set up many, many years ago and it's a fund to donate each year to needy children for Christmas gifts. And the board historically has voted $200 for a number of years, I believe, actually, at least that amount to $500 for needy children.
It is a perpetual or an endowment fund, so the original $5,000 in principle that was-
It's a non-expendable portion and a non-expendable portion.
And apparently, right now, it's about $1,700 in the expendable.
In the expendable portion and it's $5,000 in the non-expendable portion.
Is 500 the amount that's been given each year, recent years?
Last year it was 500, I believe prior years it was 200, the gift.
I'll make a motion to approve a grant in the amount of $500 from the Maryelle Peabody Fund for the purchase of Christmas gifts for needy Milton residents.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number eight is the boards and committees. We have some appointments. Town Government Study Committee.
I'll move that we appoint Richard Neely, Leroy Walker, Marvin Gordon, and John Cronin to the Town Government Study Committee to serve through November 2014.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee and Charge.
I mentioned to Bill Clark just prior to the meeting that we have a draft charge. I was hoping that what we might do tonight is appoint the people and maybe revisit the charge at the next meeting or the, or the meeting on December 3rd, just, I think we need to tweak it a little bit.
Timing. Okay, I'll move to appoint, no, I'm going to appoint myself, good. To appoint Thomas Callahan, Julie Kramer, Philip Murphy, Jay Thomas Hurley, Frank Davis to the Affordable Housing Trust Committee to serve through November 2014.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comment?
Just that I think this is a very good group of people and it's been assembled for this committee, a lot of experts in affordable housing here and housing in general, so this is-
Absolutely true.
Very good appointment finance and Phil Murphy has a legal background, so some really good appointments here.
And basically, this is for anybody who wants to develop in town, they'll, they'll put money into this fund?
It can be for a lot of different things. I mean, it, it's a pretty broad range. I mean, it's farther furtherance of affordable housing, but they can be first-time homebuyer programs and there can be a lot of different things.
No, but how is it going to be funded? Is from new developments?
Again, it can be funded in a lot of different ways, but, you know, if you had inclusionary zoning, it would be funded by that.
We have things like Two Adams Street. When Two Adams Street was approved, there was a promise from them, once they have all their permits and they start construction, they would put in $50,000 into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That was the impetus to start the trust fund unto itself. There's the potential that every time somebody does a subdivision, we get further and further behind on our 10% number. Now, there's a vehicle out there that if somebody has to provide mitigation, that we can actually point back to that account for paying into the, into a mitigating fund.
Right. Community preservation, in a lot of towns, community preservation money goes into the Affordable Housing Trust, not all of it, but some of it.
Unfortunately, we don't have that.
We don't, but-
But the match this year is 52% for the Community Preservation Act, so it's really-
Right.
Unfortunately, that we did not pass that.
What we gave up when we, when we didn't, we didn't pass was a 52% matching grant from the state.
So with, with the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, can we loan money to, like, could we loan a down payment to somebody to qualify us?
Yeah. You could either loan money-
Or could you give it as a grant?
Oh, a grant, yeah.
Both?
It's, it's how, how creative does the committee want to be? Are they looking to start their own development? Are they looking to bring in different types of developers to work with them?
Local initiative programs.
Right. We can use our, our home money with this group. It'd be identifying where these things could and should be taking place.
Right. I think it's, that's one of the things that attracted me to it was, because I know in Eastern they do it, if you want to buy an affordable house and you don't have the down payment, but you qualify and you can make the repayments, they'll either give you a grant or, or loan you the down payment. And that's what we're lacking.
It's a good program.
That's what we're lacking in Milton. I think it's a great idea.
Well, the towns that have passed the CPA, you know, have built up pretty substantial funds over the years for this purpose and we obviously don't have that, so we don't have that funding source, but, but hopefully going forward with different developments, we can get some contributions into this fund.
Exactly.
Okay. Any further comment?
And thanks to all of them for their willingness to serve because again, this is a-
Yeah, thank you, guys.
This is a well-qualified group of appointees.
Absolutely. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number nine is signage requests. We have some motions for, for signs around town.
I'll move that we approve the request of the Friends of the Milton Crew to display a banner on the town green acknowledging a championship win.
Congratulations, Milton Crew. I second them.
Motion made in second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay, I move to approve a request to display two A-frame signs, one at Adams and Granite on the deck and one in front of Pierce School from November 16th through December 7th, announcing an artisan fair on December 7th at Milton Art Center.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number 10, van driver letter of recognition.
I'll move that we approve and sign a letter of recognition, recognition to Myriam Derain, former van driver for the Council on Aging.
Second.
Motion made in second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number 10, the approval of John Thompson promotion.
I move to approve the promotion of Assistant Town Engineer John Thompson to the position of Town Engineer in recognition of the attainment of his professional engineering-
Number 10, the approval of John Thompson promotion.
I move to approve the promotion of Assistant Town Engineer John Thompson to the position of Town Engineer in recognition of the attainment of his professional engineering license.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comment?
Congratulations to John.
Yeah, congratulations to John.
Congratulations to, yeah, and he is, I've dealt with him on a number of occasions with different things around town. He is a true professional, and very worthy of this promotion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number 12, approval of one-day liquor license for the Fruit Center.
I'll move that we approve a request from the Milton Fruit Center for two one-day liquor licenses for cooking demonstrations at the Marketplace Cafe on November 19th and December 3rd from 6:30 PM to 8 o'clock PM.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Number 13 is an interview with Police Patrolman Travis Weeks. It's a number of weeks ago, yeah, a number of weeks ago, we interviewed nine applicants...
For five positions.
Five positions. And one of the applicants, I guess went a different route. We have Richard Wells, our police chief.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
That was a number of months ago, that was actually in June.
In June?
June. And we've been awaiting for the beginning of a police academy. Two different police academies have been just pushed back, pushed back, and on what's a term which in police chiefs we're learning is the term is called float status, which is not too happy for me when we're already to go. We should be getting out, not starting. Excuse me. One of the candidates suddenly withdrew, and we're in a unique position here. You're in a unique position, because we have a candidate tonight who is a police cadet who has just been certified on the Brandon List, which has been in effect in November. Travis is, meets the two years of full-time service as a cadet, which means that you, and one of the few communities in the state, Boston being the only other one, have the right to select, you pick, a cadet, use a cadet preference, and with a recommendation and a conditional offer of employment for you, he could be appointed to meet the requirements that go along with the position, and fill that vacancy, and attend the Boston Police Academy on December 9th with the other four cadets, the other four candidates that you appointed back in June. So, if you'd like, I'll...
That way, we won't miss a beat?
We won't miss a beat, and we don't, this is one of the few times we're not missing a beat. And I really want to thank you, because as Anne Marie knows, this just happened just like that. And it was just, we looked at the playing field, we looked at the law, how the law can be applied, and we looked at who was eligible. One of the things I will tell you is that if we were hiring off the list, Travis would be at the very top of that list anyway. You would see him either way. But because you have this preference available to you, it's your option to use. So, thank you for that. So that, I'll...
Bring in Mr. Weeks.
Hello, Travis. Nice to meet you.
Travis, Tom Hurley.
Nice to meet you. Travis, nice to meet you.
Travis, this is our chance to put you through the wringer.
Travis, welcome.
Thank you.
And tonight, we're going to ask you nine questions.
Okay.
Each member of the Board of Selectmen will ask you three.
Okay.
You have the option of an opening statement, if you'd like.
Sure.
And you can have a closing statement as well at the end.
Okay.
So, if you want to have an opening statement?
Okay, first off, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and sitting down, giving me the opportunity to interview with you tonight. I know you guys have a busy schedule, so again, thank you. My name's Travis Weeks, 23 years old. I've lived in town for the past 15 years or so. Lived here with my parents, my two brothers, went to Milton Public Schools, graduated from Milton High School in 2008, went on to study criminal justice in Wellesley at Mass Bay, started working for the Milton Police Department in 2011, the Milton Cadet Program. Had a great time doing that, I love it. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. So Katie's going to ask the first one, then, Tom, and then we go, until all nine are asked.
So Travis, the first question is really two parts. What made you interested in police work? And how does this position fit into your overall career path? And specifically, why the Milton Police Force?
Okay. I've always wanted to have a career where I could provide for others and serve the public. Growing up, I was always told that there's two paths in life, you can either be a part of the problem or part of the solution. I always thought what could be a better job than being a police officer and being a part of that solution. You know, being a police officer is a lot more than, you know, criminal investigation and solving crimes, it's being a presence in the community and being a guidance to others and letting them know also that, you know, you have paths to choose in life and helping them stay on the right path. Milton Police, the town of Milton has provided me with so many great opportunities throughout my life. Everything from a great education, a safe place to live with my family, great friends, you know, what better department to work for, get back to than the town of Milton.
Very good answer, Tom. Travis, what qualities do you believe is most important in a police officer? And give an example of a situation in which you've employed this quality to bring the situation to a conclusion.
Most important, I believe, compassion, you know, having an understanding of things that people are going through. You know, sometimes when we encounter a public, it's not always the best of times, and just, you know, understanding what they're going through, it may be difficult, and just being there and understanding what they're going through. Also, honesty, you have to have honesty. People have to be able to trust you in what you're doing. Good judgment, you have to have good judgment in this job. You have to look at all the elements of a situation before reacting to it. So I believe the top three qualities. For me, just being a cadet, you know, I have to exercise all three of them. And compassion, you know, when you get a phone call, you just have to, you know, take a step back, listen, see what's going on, and understand, and move from there with it.
Kind of situation down a little bit.
Exactly.
Travis, what is the most difficult situation you have faced in your life?
The most difficult situation? I would have to say it's a, it's a lot of people doubting, doubting me, you know. A lot of people will tell you what you can do from what you can't do, and do everything in their power to prove that you can't do it, and, you know, you just have to take that negative energy and just flip it and just show them that anything you put your mind to, you can do it, and you will succeed.
So removing barriers.
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Travis, in your opinion, what is the most important aspect of community policing?
Community policing, I just believe that, I believe the community is also, like, police officers, they have backup on the street. We have fellow officers on the street. I believe the community is also our backup, you know. It'd be very hard for us to do our job without the community. We get a lot of information from the community, we're able to solve a lot of things through the eyes and ears of the community, so having the community there and through social media or whatsoever it be, it's very important that it's there for us, you know.
Great. In what way do you feel your past jobs have developed your ability to take on the role of a police officer?
I started off doing security, you know. I just liked that sense of, that role of being there and providing for others and that security level, and then just being a Milton Police Cadet. It really opened my eyes to the ins and outs of the job, and it really assured me that this is something I can do. You know, a lot of people go into the job, and they're not very aware of what it entails, but being there for over two years now, I have woke up a morning where I said I didn't want to go to just go to work, you know. I enjoy waking up and going to work and doing the job, and I feel like being a police officer would take that to the next step.
Excellent. Can you give us an example of you demonstrating initiative in the past?
Initiative? Um, just, me and my friends, we actually set up, we were trying to set up a business together, and I actually took the initiative, and I set up everything, and I went forward and did all the research, and we were trying to start like a clothing line. I did the research and...
Clothing line?
Clothing line, yeah. It didn't work out too well, but I did the list and what everyone's job was going to be, and who was going to take care of what, who was responsible for what. And I believe that's taking initiative, taking that leader role.
Okay, good.
Travis, if you're hired for the position, where do you see yourself in five years?
Five years, I believe I'm still perfecting my craft and, you know, hopefully still on the street. I mean, five years, there's a lot to learn in this job and a lot to know. I believe five years is just scratching the surface, so still just learning the job, you know, maybe looking forward to continuing my education and promotion somewhere down the line.
Thank you.
Great.
Can you tell us about something, Travis, that you've failed at, and how you handled it? And looking back, would you have handled it any differently today?
Failed at, um, back in high school, I remember, I failed a class, you know. It's tough math. Math's not my strongest subject, but I remember I did do bad. I went back the next year, and I took two math classes, doubled up, and I passed both of them, you know. I just feel like can't give up on things that you do. Just have to keep working at it, especially things that you need to take care of. And I just, I feel like in the future, I just try harder, work harder.
Mine was French. I still can't speak French.
I did. I took French as well. It's a little hard now.
Last question. Have you been involved in any civic or community activities?
Actually, I have. My uncle's a principal for the Boston Public Schools, and I remember on Saturday mornings, he would set up this community program at the local community club where he would invite elementary kid, elementary school kids, and would help them prepare for the MCAS test. So we would do that every Saturday morning, we'll take them down to the library, have them sign for library cards, and have them rent out books. That was pretty cool.
You have a choice. Do you want, do you have any questions for us, or do you want to make a closing statement?
No questions. Again, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. You guys are busy, you know. Thank you for the opportunity, and whatever the outcome be, you know, I look forward to serving everyone in the town of Milton, whether it be through a police officer or a police cadet. Thank you again.
Well, thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Travis, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Sorry.
Good luck.
Travis.
Well done.
Actually, you want to have Travis...
You want to come back up, Richard, yeah?
Want to have Travis back in for this?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the police chief to appoint Cadet Travis Weeks as a cadet preference to the position of patrolman to fill a vacancy created by the withdrawal of Brian Cacamo from a conditional offer of employment.
And I'm happy to second that.
Motion was made in second. Is any comment?
Other than Travis, I'm sure you'll make a fine police officer.
Thank you.
I'd be on board.
When we were asked, when we were asked if we would, you know, go through the questions, which is the same nine questions we went through for all of the other candidates a few months ago, you know, I guess the issue was, do we take the time and go through them? But I'm glad we did, because I bet your answers were very good, and it was good for really the community to see the police cadet that's being promoted up to patrolman to go through the academy. So your answers were very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't do this very often, but this young man started writing me letters handwritten on paper. When you were how old? Seventeen? About seventeen years old. And I usually don't interview the cadets when they're hired. And in his case, he had written me so many times, I didn't know who he was. So I said to Deputy King, who was Lieutenant King at the time, I said, "Let's go sit down and interview this kid before it's all said and done." But I can say to you, and I think you know my feeling on the men and women who work there, but I can say, and this kid's, he's wise beyond his years, way beyond the age that his numerical age that he carries. In that aspect, I don't think there's a supervisor that works across the street. And there were several who asked me when you did the last round of hiring, if I could actually hold a spot, if we could hold a spot until he was eligible to take the test. And as I've said many times, and I've said this to him in the past, and he never, and we brought him in last week and told him what had happened, you'd think he won the post, what is it, the $32 million lottery? He still didn't believe it coming in tonight, so I thank you for your time and this, and this was really a win-win for the community, and I thank you for that.
I think Milton would be well-served.
We got a vote on it yet? Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, number 14 on the agenda is the approval of more budget items, FY '15 budgets. We have a bunch of motions here. One for the Wiring Committee. Inspection Services. Joe, you want to come right up? Joe Prondak, Commissioner of Inspection Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good day, Joe.
So, we are presenting two figures for our budget. Level dollar figure of $372,312. Level service figure of $387,139. To achieve the level dollar, we had to reduce our potential overtime and time allotted for a replacement inspector, which covers our plumbing inspector when he's on vacation or out sick. And also, we did put in for, to keep the temporary inspector that was allowed last year to last year's budget, but I've had to, in order to meet the level dollar figure, I had to reduce those hours down to 10.
From 20.
From 20, yes. From 16, actually, is what was allowed. But this year, we were able to go a little over 16, because he didn't start right at the beginning of the fiscal year, so there was a little extra money left over. So, that's how I achieved that. The level service number is pretty straightforward. It would just maintain the current figures with the step rate coming, and, but we're not asking for any additional money, just to maintain exactly what we're doing.
But would level service put the temporary, well, not temporary, but temporary inspector for...
That includes...
Would that include the 16 hours or the 10 hours?
That would include the 16 hours.
Okay, okay.
Level service?
Level service.
Just a question, be it level dollar, level service, are there any tech, I know you've done a lot over the years for technology in that department in terms of, are there any further technology improvements that you could see?
Yeah, I do want to upgrade the permitting system software, as we're about to go online with that. I may be able to pull that off this year.
Within the level dollar budget?
Actually, within the 14 budget.
Okay, okay.
And then beyond that, I don't see any immediate need for technology upgrades. I would like to eventually talk about some combining of existing data systems and archive files and things like that, but that's not a pressing need right now.
Joe, can you apply for a permit online yet?
Within a couple of weeks, you'll be able to do that.
Okay.
That's pretty exciting.
We're going to, maybe even test that tomorrow.
Can you pay it online?
I'm going to work that out with Jim McAuliffe. We do have, we do now have the ability to do that, and we're going to tie that into the system through Unibank. So, yes.
It is a pretty cool system.
So in terms of the permitting online, first, you're going to do it at the desk online, and then move it out? Is that the idea, or...
It'll do both at the same time.
Okay.[1747.13]
But, but a lot of people, we just feel the learning curve's gonna be very steep and a lot of people are just gonna need to come in and, especially the repeat customers, that's what's gonna benefit most, the frequent flyers, so to speak. So we really think they're gonna need to come in and we're gonna literally walk them through the process at the counter. So it's a little bit exciting. It's a big change.
Yeah. If we can get enough of it, I mean, people can apply online, that much less common transaction.
It still doesn't take away the need to, the back and forth on the plans and the plan review and all of that.
Filtered, yeah.
But.
Will there be a, you can attach your plans and attach your workers' compensation?
Yes. All of that is available in the upgraded system.
Yep, okay.
But that still means, in other words, where I review my plans at the desk, at the plan table, I would then need a computer monitor big enough to read plans on, you know, you can't really thoroughly review plans on a, on a small monitor. I have gone down to Marshfield. Marshfield has the same system. They have the upgraded system and they have a combined program that their IT department developed that did, did a really good job of tying the plans into the permitting system so that all the edits and comments and changes to the plans can all be made online. Marshfield is literally paperless on their permit system now, so.
Great.
That would be the goal. We still have to save some paper forms for those who just.
Oh, yeah.
Will have no interest in going.
Right.
With the modern technologies. But, but anyways, the budget is.
The other question I had, Joe, is your fee revenue in FY-14 is down from thirteen. Was, was it something extraordinarily high in thirteen that's causing?
The fee revenue.
Schedule B.
Schedule B.
The anticipated fee revenue?
Yeah, it looks like you're, I mean.
As I've, as I've said at the Warren Company many times, every year since I've been here, on all of my projected fee revenue, I simply take the previous year's, the actual revenue we took in and I, I reduce it by ten percent.
Okay. Yep, that is ten percent, you're right.
It's just kind of a policy.
Okay, okay.
And that way, we're not anticipating too much. If we go over, all is good. If we go dramatically under ten percent, then something's really wrong with the economy.
And your fifteen estimate is basically the same as your fourteen estimate, yeah. Okay, okay, gotcha. And that being said, any, for fourteen, we had, we had one decent sized project permitted, right?
Fourteen, right now, the biggest project permitted was the.
Coin.
Yeah. Laboratory was thirteen.
Was that thirteen? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because that, that figured into our, the substantial difference, difference we had in fee revenue between twelve and thirteen.
Okay, okay.
This year, we've already seen the Milton Hill project, which.
Oh, that's right.
Generate a substantial fee. We are anticipating in fourteen, the, not assisted living, but the hospice project and additions and new homes are a fairly steady stream. It's, it's, it's a, it's a healthy looking next twelve months.
Good, good.
It's good.
All right, we have a motion here.
Okay, I'll make a motion, I'm not even looking at it, but to approve and forward to the Warren Committee the Inspeccional Services budget for 2014.
Do you want to say the amounts for level dollar and level service?
Sure, okay. The amount for level dollar is three hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and the level service dollar amount is three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one thirty-nine.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good job. Next up is the fire department and we have Chief Jack Grant with us. Hello, Chief.
Good evening, good evening.
Chief.
How are you?
How are you? Your level dollar.
Our level dollar is four million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand and ninety. And the, the level service that we're proposing this year would be four million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven sixty-seven. The changes that we made to maintain the level dollar this year were, last year's overtime budget was three hundred thousand. We've dropped that down to two hundred and eighty thousand and the.
Is that attainable or?
I'm gonna get to that. The, they're both iffy, to be perfectly honest with you. The second one is probably safer than the first, but there is, there's quirks to both of them. The second was that we took and cut the personal day buyback from thirty thousand down to fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five. You may recall last year, we actually increased, and I meant to look it up this afternoon, we made an increase and we hadn't touched the overtime line for, you know, four or five years and it was getting tight. I believe we jumped from two hundred and eighty-five thousand up to the three hundred. And unfortunately, unfortunately, here we are this year trying to.
Go the other way.
Back to two eighty.
Yep.
I, I have less concern with the personal day buyback. Most of, you know, most of those days are taken in time rather than taken in money, but it is a contractual obligation that, you know, if they all decided to take it in money, we would have to pay it out. So we're kind of playing with fire a little bit there.
Plus if they take it in time, it's overtime.
Either way, either way you slice it, yeah. Unfortunately, what, what we found over the course of the years is, yeah, the first year I was in, we came in with the sixty thousand dollar new equipment figure. And on top of that, we were running a couple of bodies light due to the fact that we had closed companies the year before, so I was being very cautious. And we also had a bottom line budget at that point in time. So we did very well with stocking up on equipment that year. The following year, there was somewhat of a cut to new equipment, but then there was a reinstatement. So I believe that year, we were right around that sixty thousand dollar figure still. Year after that, we were cut and kind of bounced back to forty-five, forty-six thousand. And then last year, we actually submitted zero. Just to make up that level dollar, we, we actually had to submit with zero. And at the, at the end of the day, the Warren Committee reinstated us up to twenty thousand for new equipment. Through the course of this year, we found that it's, that's just not sufficient, so we can't possibly come in and propose zero in new equipment again. I'm very uncomfortable proposing twenty thousand. Like you say, we're, we're, you know, realistically, we have seven, seven and a half months left. When I wrote this up, we were full eight months out and we're down to thirty-seven hundred in new equipment for the remainder of the year. And to be perfectly honest, it's spoken for. But at this point, it's one of those things where it's actually, you know, the items aren't of an emergency replacement nature, so, you know, I'm sitting on it in case an emergency does pop up.
Yep.
So I do have concerns, but we have to draw the line somewhere.
Yeah, one of the things we're looking at in the, in the capital committee, I don't think we'll do it this year, but, but we've had discussions on it, is, is looking at the Arlington model where they go in and they take all the capital out of all of the budgets. That means fire equipment that is in your budget, police cars that's in Richard's budget, and everything winds up coming through capital committee and gets proposed. Not necessarily bonded, it could come out of budget or, you know, out of the operating budget, but it gets pulled out of your budget and basically the, the capital committee recommends and fights for it. So it's an interesting, it's almost, you know, you're turning the same dollar, so.
You're right. It is an interesting concept, though. I'm, I'm an advocate here every year that, you know, the, the figures that we have seem to come in and point towards, well, to backtrack just a little bit, Chief Larson was shooting for eighty-five thousand. I think those couple of years of level dollar and the stuff that we were able to accomplish there, I think we're, we're pretty good at that sixty thousand dollar level. But that being said, if it were to come out of a larger pool in that you're not trying to justify sixty every year, there is some fluctuation. You know, it's those, those years when you have to replace, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars worth of Scott bottles or, you know, turnout gear, there's some of the larger items that aren't there every year. There's, there's always a need and a good need. It's not that we're spending money just to say, all right, geez, I gotta maintain sixty. There's, there's something there, but if it's coming out of a larger pool, we could absorb some fluctuation year to year. It is an interesting concept.
Jack.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the expenses, this is, this is a minor difference, but water and sewer is listed at a different amount in the level dollar versus the level service by about three thousand dollars. I was just wondering what the reason for that is? It would seem to be a fixed cost, but.
Yes, and I, I think what's happening there, if, if you notice, let me pull that out and I can point to, in the level service, what we did was we added to that line, we added to the fuel line, and we added to maintenance costs. And they're relatively modest, all told, it's eight thousand dollars increase. And realistically, that came from, in looking over those things, we knew we were getting tight in that we hadn't moved any of the general expense items over this whole phase of level dollar expenditures. Those lines seem to have been overspent for, you know, more than one, you know, possibly more than two years, so we felt it was time to add to those in that there's just not, we're coming to that point in time where there's really just not that much room to shift and move, so we felt the need to add a little bit.
So on a level dollar budget, if that's ultimately the budget that's passed at the end of the day, it might mean taking money from one of your other general expenses to pay water and sewer.
Yes, and, and that's done commonly.
What if I shower every other day, one of the two?
It's one of those things where what you hope to do is have room that we, that we can still slide a little bit of money there. But as I say, it is, it is getting tight and we are having less options. You know, kind of the last resort kind of thing is the situation we were in, you know, six years ago, seven years ago, where occasionally you were, you know, forced to shut engine companies down to get through those last couple of months. So realistically, with, with the level service budget that we've put forth, that's what we're looking to avoid. We haven't put any huge increases in there, you know, just enough that we hope to alleviate that possibility.
I think, I think it was a great idea to ask for the, the level service, because you could really see where the differences are and where.
Where we're getting squeezed.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I'm just wondering, Tom and Katie, because you were on the Warren Committee, like this reserve fund is just for unexpected expenditures, right?
Yes.
But if you're fairly confident on, in your overtime budget, why can't we put it in there?
Put it in?
He, he reduced it this year, probably knowing that we're gonna have to transfer it eventually, right? From the reserve fund?
Right, again, if, if we're coming with a level dollar budget, you have to, in other words, see, the, the Warren Committee has said that in the past. I don't know if they've actually said this year that they want level dollar. Did they, they let it, they let it one out, it just asked for both, right? At this point?
Yes.
So, so a level dollar budget means that whatever fund you have for FY-14 and the same fund you have for fifteen, with the exception of pay increases are absorbed through a, a set aside. And any longevity and step increases have to be absorbed in your budget. So necessarily, if you're gonna come back in with the same dollars, something has to give, you know, even though you might, at the end of the year, wind up overspending it. But.
Okay, all right, I get it. All right, we have a motion here. This one?
I'll move that we approve and forward to the Warren Committee the FY-15 Fire Department budget in the amount of four million, seven hundred, seventy-one thousand, ninety dollars, level dollar, and four million, eight hundred, fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred, sixty-seven dollars, level service.
Aye.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment?
Just before you vote, it's actually eight hundred and fifty-two instead of eight hundred and fifty-seven.
I didn't catch that either, yeah. The level service.
Did I read the wrong amount? Four million, eight.
Eight fifty-two.
Two, seven sixty-seven for level service.
I should've kept my mouth shut because the mistake was, the mistake was in my favor.
Screwed yourself.
Honesty, huh?
I will second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next up is the.
Thank you very much. Have a good night now.
Take care, Joe. Police Department budget. Welcome up Chief Richard Wells. And again, your, your level dollar is six million, seven hundred, one thousand, three sixty-seven and the level service is six million, three hundred and fifty-nine, six zero nine.
That's correct. Okay.
I don't have this attached. Do you have it? Yeah, I do. It's page, it's page fifty-nine or is, sorry. Fifty-nine, okay.
Richard, can we start on your budget with the variance for the current year FY-14?
Sure. Which one? The one that I have in there?
Yeah.
The hundred and twenty-five?
Hundred and twenty-five and the thirty-two for expenses.
See, I think that's the gasoline, right?
Yeah, thirty-two's the gasoline.
So in looking at the guidance given by the Warren Committee this year, is, you know, in both aspects, the gasoline has been the one issue where I have had to come fight for an RFT. It's just the fluctuation of gas prices, the system the town uses now, the buying system, I really have no control of, but I'm a slave to because from a gas perspective, we have the largest fleet and we use the most gas. So this year, they put the variance column in there. It's been there the last two years, so we put that in. We put the actual number that we've spent or needed and the same with overtime. So the hundred and twenty-five thousand, I went back today and did about a six-year history. Even when we had fifty-seven police officers and we've been working up until this year, the highest we've been funded since oh-nine was fifty. This year, fourteen, we got it back to fifty-three. It's still significantly below fifty-seven. The actual overtime has, each year has been between four hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand dollars every single year. Now, I, I'm not gonna go into a dissertation, but each of you in this room knows the demands that come upon us constantly. We're the busiest agency in town. We serve the overwhelming community. As I wrote in a recent five-year forecast that, that E. Maria asked for, if you just, I just took like a glimpse of a picture. In nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-two, the, was the last time that a board of selectmen engaged in a comprehensive management study of the police department. At that time, there were fifty-seven police officers with a population of twenty-five thousand people. Today, we have a population of twenty, just over twenty-seven thousand people in a police department, funded police department of fifty-three police officers. And if you just look at the issues that sit on your plate each and every day, and I'm not talking like the things, the headaches like traffic or just the changes in this community between BID, Gus Medical Center, Curry, the schools, we now have new business districts, the demand for policing as well as the challenges just that complex society place upon us each and every day make us very, Mr., I don't have to go any further than you, there are more things that I know you would like for me to do, but it's, it's, I can tell you right now, I go to bed every single night, the last thing I think about is how many people working tonight and please don't want something bad happen. Because I'll be honest with you, when I came on this job thirty years ago, the thought that there'd be a night in this town where there are only four police officers patrolling it would never even entered my mind. Yet today, it's a reality and it's been a reality for a while and it's not something that we talk about often, but it's definitely not something I feel that comfortable. So the one twenty-five variance, which was a long-winded answer to your question, reflects the actual amount of money that we've spent in overtime almost every year.
Okay, I guess, I mean, the reason I ask it is, it's a total of one fifty-seven that you're projecting, you're gonna, you're gonna go over budget in the current year, if I'm reading this right.
Yeah, so, right.
You have a reserve fund of, what, two hundred thousand dollars?
Right, so the reserve fund could.
Two fifty-seven.
So I've not come for a reserve fund for overtime yet, I don't think, other than a reimbursable one that we did last year that we got our money back from, was it the, I think it was, might have been the response of the marathon or not. So basically, what you do is you draw from every other aspect of your budget to fill the needs, to put it into overtime. So it's every other, every available dollar, everything, so that's why the actual is always higher. So this year, as I said, there's a variance column, we put it in there. If you look at in FY-13, even though we appropriated two ninety-six, two one-nine in overtime, the actual was four sixty-five, eight eighty.
Well, all right, so I guess my question is, by putting it in variance, are you just indicating you're gonna be taking from one other aspect of your budget to move money from? from another area of your budget?
I'm indicating to you, that's the reality, right. The reality of the overtime is because, as you know, and you'll see, and we went through this exercise last year, we put, we got 100 put back in, and with the help of this board, not only we had 100 put back in, we were able to increase our staffing up to 53 officers, and I did not want to get back in. This started in 2000, FY07, when we had 56, we stepped up and said, we'll let two officers go unfunded for a year, and that just went into a slowdown, that we just couldn't, so no, I'm not...
But you're not projecting that you're going to be coming in for an RFT request for anywhere near this amount?
No, and I've never done that.
That was a concern, we looked at, obviously.
But just so you know, that's the reality, that really is the number, and it's, there's so many things that people are always, it's just, it's never-ending.
I guess that's the only thing to be looking for, Rich, is just to get some kind of an idea of what you're trying to manage that, that $157,000 budget.
I'll buy a scratch ticket every day for the rest of the...
I'll buy one, you pay a buck and I'll pay a buck.
I'd be honest with you, and I'd be lying if I, I think, maybe it's the way you were brought up and just how you lived your life, and I go back to something that Mr. Cronin said to me many years ago, is that you need to learn to be thrifty. I never thought I'd be this thrifty, but as you know, this is my, I think, my seventh budget, and we've pretty much lived within every one of them, with some significant things that happened. I mean, all the positives that happen on a community, I can, and you don't need me to tell you, we face some big challenges here sometimes, and we've dealt with it pretty well, but I, going back to what I first said, it's, you know, could something really bad happen and we would need an RFT for overtime? It could happen, but the way we manage it is, I get a weekly projection, John and I both do, of exactly what was spent, and we break it down, we spread it over the 52.2 weeks as to what we can spend and what we can't spend. I mean, you're at the end of the year right now, where, as you know, based on our collective bargaining agreements, they can't carry over, they have vacation time, so it's use it or lose it, so you have, particularly with senior people who have the fifth week, they're using, this is usually the time of year where they're using their, you know, what's left of their time. And so your overtime can take a lot of pressure there, yeah, and a lot of people, you know, they want to be off Christmas and Thanksgiving, they're going to. And historically, the town has always predating, when I was chief, tried to do everything we could, especially in the holidays, to meet any requests for time off when we can do it. But then fortunately, we get through January, February, and into March, that's when you're really trying to kind of pull it back a little bit, hold the reins back, and try and keep the overtime down, because you know, once it warms up again, then you're going to get, then you're going to get busy. So that's pretty much how we do it, we follow it every single week, and as I say, I'm not guaranteeing it, but no, I don't want you to, I'm not asking to hold your breath to say I'm coming in for 125 for now.
All right, thanks for clarifying that for us.
What they're saying is, be really nervous if you do need.
Well, there's not 157,000 in the reserve fund to fund it anyway, so.
All right, we have a motion?
One other question, it looks like the difference between your level dollar and your level service budget, some of it's personnel, but it looks like a big portion of it's new equipment.
Yes, so, and I want to go back to a statement you made earlier, Mr. Earl, was that when I first started writing car bids, which is 20 years ago, the new equipment, which is predominantly the replacement cruisers, was in the capital budget every year. It was Mr. Cronin, I know we'll be talking about John so much tonight, but it was at some point back then, under Chief Mattel, they decided that, because what they saw would happen is if you skip a couple of years and you don't, you can't make a capital appropriation, now your fleet goes down, your repair costs go through the roof, and so that was when the decision was made to put just the cars, just the new equipment cars, you know, not other capital requests, into, as a line item in the budget, and it's been that way. So in short, to your answer, we have had a four-car replacement plan for years, we reduced that to three since FY10, I believe, we never got that back, just to make up a little dollar of service, I had to reduce it to two.
Yeah, but the Arlington model is, they rank, the Capitol Committee itself ranks capital requests by, I think it's five different categories. Number one category is public safety and health. So, you know, any cruiser would get a number one ranking, it would be the first thing that's funded, whether it's funded, whether they bonded or funded out of...
I could live with that, I'll be honest with you, one of the things I said last year to the Capitol Committee was, because we take things like motorcycles or the patrol wagon, especially, they usually don't go in the line, those become, because those are things that you're only replacing every 10, 15 years, and they become more of a capital request. The line item is the cruisers. I suppose, I would, if you felt that it would work, I'd be amenable to it, I'm not, just, the only danger is, and I see this a lot with Quincy, Quincy does it, they bond. So they may go along a while, and their cars will go, and then they'll try and buy like 20 at a time, and the difficulty is you get into these, and your repair bills go through the roof at some point. Even though we buy, we buy the zero, three is 75,000, which is the most you can get on a, you know, frontline vehicle like that, and we buy it, because it's like, we just had an engine go the other day, on a brand-new car, and warranty covered it. So those are where, you know, when you get beyond, I don't like going beyond the white shows, and I've done this enough now, both as a deputy chief and administration here.
Technology-wise, we're buying more fuel-efficient cars.
We are, but unfortunately, if we, yeah, if we could keep gas down below $3 a gallon, we would see some benefit, but these spikes to $4 a gallon, and as I say, the bid, as you know, the bid we're in now, it's like a collaborative bid, we go, and then it shoots up, and it's not serving us well. I mean, I pulled it out again today, I did a 15-year study, it's amazing how this happened, because the whole goal of moving towards these fuel-efficient cars was to keep that, and it's...
Right, right.
Am I putting you to sleep there? I'm killing you.
My other question, because you brought it up, so I'll bring it back up again, is, you know, one of my, one of my goals is to see, you know, some, either bicycle patrol or foot patrol in the business districts, just for purposes of presence, and some parking enforcement.
I'm glad you brought that up. So I would say, once these five graduate, I'd say by the spring, you're going to see a lot more of those things, and I do think, I'd like to come in very soon, maybe after the first, especially in East Milt where we have this project going, I've recently talked to Dedham and to the Cape, there's some, we could really become far more efficient in our parking and turning over and all that than how we're doing it now, we're really antiquated. If you've been to Dedham Square recently and see the capital improvement that they just did there, what they...
Great, yeah, the square, really good.
Excellent, excellent, Plymouth did the same thing, it makes it, it turns it over, which is, I think, what the, you know, the majority of the tenant, merchants want, and it makes it much easier for us to enforce it. I mean, it is now, we're coming, we're signed changes in 30 and 40, and it's just, I'm very impressed by what I saw both in Plymouth and Dedham, and I think either one of them would serve us well here in this town.
Yeah, now they have pay stations, is that what they...
They have the pay station, and, a combination of the pay stations, and they have meters that have, could take money or credit card, but very simply, for a patrol officer driving down the street, little green light, LED light flash green, you're good, flashes red, it's in violation. I mean, that just makes an officer, I mean, it would just make it a lot easier, and not that to say that we're looking to, because we don't, I mean, as you know, we've been very amenable with the merchants over there, we try to be, we understand that that's their livelihood, but we do have to, we could do a better job. I think we could do a far more efficient job in all of our business districts as far as turn, and again, in central, not to get, I'm going, rushing on here, but central of the village, you've constantly got the pressure of people using those trains, and it's more and more every day.
Right, right.
So I give you my word on that, I've told you, that will be our, that'll be our spring, our spring project.
All right.
All right, I'll move that we approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY15 Police Department budget in the amount of $6,171,367 for level dollar, and $6,359,609 for level service.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the MIMA budget.
This number is the same for level dollar and level service, and it's pretty straightforward, it's the same budget really every year. So I'll move that we approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY15 MIMA budget in the amount of $10,615.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next up is the Consolidated Facilities budget. Bring up Bill Ritchie.
Hi, Bill.
How you doing? Good evening, thank you for having me.
Hi, Bill.
Bill?
Ritchie is the director of the Public Facilities. So Bill, you want to walk us through your level and service, level dollar and level service?
Yes, we have 622,634 for my level dollar and my level service, what I'm trying to get is 705,069. The biggest jump right there would be adding a professional painter on staff on the evening shift, that would be the jump.
A professional, $10,000 jump?
Well, that's one of them, yep, and then the other one is all my narratives, and all the jumps, you know, trying to build a brand-new department.
And then what about the expenses, Bill? If you could just speak to that.
Yeah, from level dollar to level service, you know, obviously, we, you know, level dollars, this, obviously, having a brand-new department, not knowing, you know, I really don't have enough history to really try to build a perfect budget, so as I go along, I'm learning and trying to find out where the needs are, and trying to add and deduct as needed, as a brand-new department.
Looks like it's mainly grounds and building maintenance.
A lot of it's equipment maintenance, you know, for gas, myself and my operation manager, we have our own vehicles, so we're using our own gas, and we pretty much track that on a monthly basis. We have the school do program, which is a $5,000 hit every year, it's a web-based program. And just, you know, as we, as we're learning, you know, we have a cleaning contract for the, for the library, for the town hall, and for the seniors, and it's very explicit of what they do, so if you look at some of these floors there, these floors never have ever looked so good in the last 15 years, so we, I went above and beyond to buy my own wax, own products to make, you know, to kind of enhance the products, because some of the cleaning products that the cleaners will use is not, is not the best grade, you know, that, you know, they, it was a really low-ball budget, so I'm trying to enhance that with some better cleaning products and putting better dispensing systems in.
What is the professional services will cut out in your level dollar?
Well, that was the, that was, when we first started out, we had the DRA study, and as we continued to kind of go on that, we weren't sure if they were going to do like structural analysis, if we have a building and beyond my expertise, I might need, you know, a service company like DRA, so...
On the level dollar, you're just going to do without that?
Yeah, and I added in back in this year, and obviously, a level dollar, I took it out, but if I put a level service, I put it back in because I know the fire department's going to be doing some fire study.
Right.
Somebody might ask the question, Bill, what's the structural analysis of a building? So I may need to have some money in there, so.
So Bill, you have a new painter on here for 45,000?
Well, yeah, it's proposed, yeah.
That's proposed, right. Level, level service, right.
Is it, is it more economical to have a guy on the payroll or to sub it out?
Well, I think if we subbed it out, if I wanted to do what I want to do with a painter, contracted painter, you're probably talking $100,000. We have roughly a million square feet of property here, I could have, I could have five painters going five nights a week just painting all the walls in the school buildings. If you look at the schools like Glover, it's 12 years old, I could pretty much paint every classroom. It's just the wear and tear of the buildings, and, you know, people put bulletin boards on the wall, you move boards around, it's constantly patching, painting, the hallways get abused, yeah, so you, I think we really need a painter off-hours to start some type of preventive maintenance program, because eventually, we're going to, you know, we have to paint every building, and I think when you be starting from point one, by this two-year cycle, he's probably starting all over again. It's just wear and tear of a building. And what's happening, I think one of the biggest things I really need to explain is, is that in the summertime, when the kids are out of schools, I'm taking my maintenance department, and we're painting, and that kind of defers other maintenance, roofing, windows, gutters, painting, so that's, so I'm trying to juggle, you know, a very bare-bones staff, and we can gobble up a lot of time trying to paint a lot of the buildings, so having somebody painting off-hours Monday, you know, I was trying to think like a Tuesday to a Saturday shift, 2:30 to 10:30, painting off-hours, we can really catch up in a few years and not have to use these, our maintenance staff, painting off some along in buildings, and I want to have them outside doing roof repairs and sidewalk repairs and changing patio bricks, so. I mean, it's a, it's a major learning process, it's a brand-new department and trying to fill all the needs and trying to say, what is the key people you want to put in there?
Bill, on the line is 52360, this is for other contract services?
Yeah.
Are the numbers reversed, because the level dollar is 5,000 higher than level service, but I guess on the level service, you've got a new line at the bottom party of payments to contractors?
Yeah, that's the one from, from level dollar to 20,000, 265, is that the one?
Yes.
Then went down a little bit? Yeah, well, we just, well, we had, well, we just, as we look at the budget, where I think we can fill in using our heating ventilation engineer, so we're just trying to balance the, you know, like, I kind of carried over some of the money from the actual.
It just looked like maybe they might be reversed.
No, that's, we know, we have to draw up, I feel like, you know, it's...
Yeah, I think what Katie's saying is, if you need it in your level dollar, why wouldn't you need that same dollars in your level service?
Right.
You might get that question from the Warren Committee, they'll look at this a little more closely.
Yep.
It might just be reversed in the wrong column.
Yeah, it looks like it is.
And what about the software support? That looks like that's something new.
Well, they, that's the, that's school do, that's, you know, that's all the maintenance stuff, but that's how we track all our work orders.
Right, and actually, in level dollar, you'd need that one too, right? I mean, you have to come from some...
Well, I mean, if I had to cut it, I had to cut it, I mean, we just have to go back to a handwritten work order system, you know, no, but, well, no, I'm just saying...
No.
Actually, it's in the current year too, so...
Right, but I'm just, you know, you have to, you know, you try, you know, you try to present a budget, level dollar, and, you know, where do you, you know...
I hate to say it, but no.
Well, hopefully, yeah, that's the answer, you know.
All good? We have a motion?
Yep.
Let me read it.
You go ahead.
I'll move that we approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY15 Consolidated Facilities budget in the amount of $622,634 for level dollar and $705,069 for level service.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Are you staying around for executive session?
I am, yes, yep. That's why I was last.
Okay, next is our law budget.
Yeah, probably just have E. Maria explain the couple of changes in the law budget, but...
The change that you love, I get you, received from Town Council, the engagement letter for fiscal year 15, he is looking to increase his retain by $2,000 from $56,000 to $58,000. He is looking to increase his hourly rates for special services from $195 an hour to $200 an hour, paralegals are from $90 to $95 an hour. His labor service, which is covered by Andy Wa, is for unions, which you have seven unions now on the town side, they're looking to increase their hourly rate from $195 to $200 an hour, and the paralegal from $90 to $95 an hour.
I should have been a lawyer.
Other special services, they're looking to increase their hourly rate from $210 to $215 an hour, and those other special services that aren't encompassed in the law department budget would be something, for an example, when we did the house move for the library, the land swap there, that was paid for out of the library budget, but it's still done by Town Council, so it doesn't, it was paid out of the library department budget, however, it's covered by an hourly rate by Town Council. The dispersments, he's looking, Town Council's looking to increase his dispersment line from $4,000 to $5,000. So in your level dollar budget, what I did was I decreased in order to bring in a level dollar budget, I decreased the special services line from $200,000 to $197, and the level service, I just put the $3,000 back in there and brought it back up to $200,000.
Yeah, I just wonder whether law is one of those things you really should think about, level dollar, because it's almost like a bill, not quite like a bill, but it's almost like a bill.
It's like a fixed cost, absolutely.
Yeah, that it's just on...
It is what it is, right?
It kind of is what it is, yeah, I mean, granted, it's an estimate, but it still kind of is what it is, yeah.
I think his request for changes are more than reasonable, and if anybody's underpaid, it's John Flynn, so, for all the work he does for us.
Right.
So I will make a motion to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY15 Law Budget in the amount of $261,000 level dollar and $264,000 level service.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Finally, the general insurance budget.
And this is a fixed cost budget. I am happy to report that we will be level dollar, uh, level dollar in this budget for fiscal year fifteen. Um, we have, knock on wood, had a good year in fiscal year thirteen, and that is due to participation by both the town and the schools and all our department heads in the Maya loss control credit program, which resulted in savings to the town of Milton of over sixty thousand dollars. That coupled with some participation in dividend credits, we saw a hundred thousand dollar savings on our multi-peril for fiscal year thirteen, so that...
You're able to use some of those savings to offset any premium increases you might see.
Exactly.
We, we don't know what those premiums might look like at this point, though, right?
We do not know, but they were comfortable in level dollar in us for fifteen.
Let me get to it. Look at it. We have a motion.
You can read it.
I'll move that we approve and forward to the warrant committee the F Y fifteen general insurance budget in the amount of nine hundred fifty thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars.
I'll second.
Motion was made in second. Any further comment?
Just give me one second to find it. Do you have a page number?
The paper copy, if you want.
Oh, you want to go through the...
I just wanted to check a quick peek at the budget, so...
Emily, what page is it?
I was reading out the hot copy. Is that the consolidated?
There's law. I'm almost there. There it is. Okay, right. Yeah, no further comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, number fifteen is the discussion committee town and school to consolidate the facilities. I'd like to welcome up as many as the school committee can put up here, Superintendent Mary Gormly. Did you hear that, Mary?
Good evening.
Good evening. Lynn Lilly, how are you? Leroy? Mary?
You guys posted?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Did you really need to ask?
No, not really. It gave me a hard time. So I'm glad to be discussing this. I, I think it's, you know, long overdue and, and, you know, given the fact we've had the government study committee and everything else, and the, the D O R report just come out, uh, we are going to, uh, I, I believe we are going to, because I know, I know it's in the I T budget book, the, uh, the I T study, uh, which we've got an estimate of about fifty grand or so for a consultant that committed to do that. But assuming the warrant committee approves it, it's going to be in there, but, uh, so I, I just wanted to start this discussion by just... And I don't think we're getting it accomplished tonight in terms of what could be consolidated between town and school. But I think it's, it's, it's a conversation worth having, worth looking at, perhaps putting a committee together to look at the feasibility, and then come back and report to, to both boards on, on the findings. So at best, I, I hope we could do that tonight in terms of just kind of decide what that committee might look like. I have an idea of what it might look like, but I haven't heard your thoughts on it yet.
Well, so we discussed it briefly at our last meeting. It was a long meeting, so we didn't have too much time to go into it. But we did, um, bring up the topic, and obviously, it had been, the discussion had begun at the, um, joint meeting that we had had with the reading of the report. So, um, we are absolutely in favor of going forward, and, uh, we will discuss in greater detail tomorrow night what that, what, what the exact, you know, components of that are. But it's, I think this is a great opportunity for us to share, uh, you, you know, hear your opinions and your ideas about it too. Um, we do have a meeting tomorrow night, so we can take it back and, and, um, talk about specifics then as well. But we are posted for tonight, so we can engage in discussion with you. We have at least three members of our committee who have already said that there's an interest in serving, um, on the committee. I don't know if you think, uh, what the composition of that committee should be. Maybe it should be...
My, my thought process was that, uh, and I don't know about the, the school side, but, but certainly in terms of the three selectmen, I'd rather see the people that know the town operations better be the people. So I would like to see Amy, uh, as part of that committee, clearly. I would like to see either Ann Marie or, you know, maybe it's a, you know, maybe Michael can get his baptism of fire, you know, one of the two. But, um, but again, you know, somebody that knows what the operations really are. And on the school side, I would love to see Glenn and, um, and then, you know, somebody else from the administration.
How many are you thinking on the committee?
I don't know. I mean, I, you know, but I think at least those people, you know, if we want to backfill it with some, you know, school committee members and some selectman members, that's fine. But at least from the selectman's side, it doesn't really matter to me. I mean, I don't have to be on the committee.
You're on enough committees.
I'm on enough committees anyway, so it'll be Katie anyways.
Oh, thank you.
But we, we, I had asked for who was interested, so that isn't, I didn't mean to say that we would have three representatives serving on the committee, but there were three names that were put forward, so, um, you know, I think probably that's too many people from our, our committee to serve on. And absolutely, I personally agree that a member of the administration would be important to have on that, that subcommittee. Would there be any town-side folks that would include as well, or would this just be an internal, you know, a...
I think at this point, and, and, you know, Leroy or anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure what somebody from the outside necessarily brings, other than playing devil's advocate perhaps, but they certainly don't understand the operations well enough to, to be able to say, "Yeah, that service makes sense," or "That one doesn't." You know, I think it would be very difficult for somebody from the outside to do that.
Yeah, except, I want, maybe a former employee or, you know, there may be someone who's a former committee member, former employee, who might have some time and have some interest in it.
Yeah, I was just thinking back to when we did the consolidated facilities, um, you know, exploration committee. We had some townsfolk that had a skill set, but I think that you've, my opinion, I think you've keyed in on some, you know, key, key people and...
Would you have two selectmen?
Lots of the rest of the group here.
I don't think you need two selectmen, no.
Probably just one, yeah.
Most one, yeah. Yeah, I thi- I think it's more important having the, the administration people on it. Yeah, and then in terms of what you look at, you, you people, you know, the, the committee decides, I mean, you know, the obvious, the obvious ones are, are I T, you know, maybe some accounting functions, you know, perhaps payroll and, you know, functions, that kind of thing. You know, things that don't impact the education process, but impact the business process. Understanding that the schools have differences, certainly in financial reporting and everything else from the town side. And, and it probably doesn't make a lot of sense to try and consolidate those things because they are so specialized. But, um, but, you know, but certainly I T, um, uh, what do you call it?
H R, maybe?
H R, yeah. Senior moments are terrible. And, um, yeah, those kinds of things.
So would we collectively come up with a, a charge per se, or is it just an exploratory committee that we leave? Kind of like the explorer, exploration in terms of what the possibilities might be to the, to the...
Yeah, I, I leave it a very general charge. I mean, the, the charge is to, is to look at all aspects of the, the administration of both the town side and, and the school side to see what things could potentially be. And, and, and maybe the charge is, even if that doesn't result in a, in a savings of dollars, if it results in a, um, you know, a, a better overall service of, you know, maybe it makes sense.
So I think there are probably two models. One is, um, the selectmen and the school committee have a little more of a discussion about, you know, what I call blue sky. What do we think and where, where are we looking for opportunities? Why? What are the possibilities? What are the areas where we might need outside assistance to win the least point? And then, once we've framed that, then we say to the people that do the work, "Okay, here, here are some general questions we need answered. Here are some possibilities. What do you think?" The other, the other is to have some combination of the people that do the work, selectmen, school committee, on the committee and kind of get that done in process. But it, either way works. I, I, I think there might be some benefit to giving, um, the, the team itself a little more direction than simply saying, "We're looking for opportunities." In my mind, that may be a little bit too general. But as I said, if you have some representation, representation of the school committee and the selectmen on that committee, and that, you could also accomplish it that way, although I'm not sure that's the most efficient way to get the work done. Trying to do a couple of things at the same time.
Yeah, and again, I'm, I'm open either way, so that's fine. You know, we, we could narrow the scope of certainly if you wanted to. I don't have a problem with that.
No, I don't either.
Are the school committee members, Mike? I know this was something that you...
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I may favor the latter approach that Leroy described, maybe a little bit more general. And, you know, presuming you have committee members on there, just more delegating it to that committee to explore the opportunities so you're not limiting, because they may find things in the course of their review that we don't necessarily anticipate. So I think I would, um, personally, I would favor something a little bit more general along the lines of what Leroy outlined, second as opposed to first.
And when you think of that long-range planning committee and the consolidated facilities committee, there were so many residents with expertise on those two committees. They seem to have stayed with the school district and the town is still involved. So there might be individuals up there who could come in with a set of eyes. And the people who are racing inside might not have even seen that opportunity or might be right in front of them.
I mean, there certainly are people with, with, the, the business skill set to look at something like that. They, they just don't know the operation, so, and, and you're asking volunteer people to, I mean, to, to really do it properly. You know, it, it would be a big job to fully understand the operations of both sides. You know, I mean, they, they could play devil's advocate, I suppose, and say, "I've seen this work places," you know. You know, "Why couldn't you do this?" You could certainly, you could certainly do that. But, but I'm not sure somebody from the outside is going to be that good at, at really getting to the nuts and bolts of it. But I might be wrong.
Well, what about, say, a former member of the I T committee? It's been disbanded and it's been inactive. But when it was in, in effect, it was a pretty involved committee, at least on, I don't know about it on the school side, but at least on the town side. Maybe a former member of the I T committee might be asked anyway to see if they would have any interest in serving on the committee.
I kind of see it as, you know, if that committee comes together and says, "Okay, I T is something that might make sense." You know, that, that I can, we can vision it, then maybe you need some additional expertise come in after that and say, "This is what we're looking at. These are the groups of things we're looking at, perhaps consolidating." And maybe you need some additional expertise at that point to actually accomplish the, the M O A, if you will, of, of how to get it, get it done.
I T's the, the one place where, as I said when we had the D O R discussion, I, I think we really need to talk about and to actually define what our I T strategy is first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's the one place where I just don't think it makes sense to throw the two together and say, "Okay, we probably get something out of that."
Oh, it'd fail.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and, but you've mentioned, you've mentioned consultant, hopefully that'll be a consultant to the selectmen. And, and you can get that strategic plan that you need, and then that, that should drive the discussion about. And I'm sure that coming out of that, they'll see, they should see certain opportunities. But that's one where I think we really do need outside expertise.
Yeah, you made a good point. Right now, and maybe we should consider that, right now, we have an I T budget, and I mean, it might make more sense to put that into professional services, to select this professional service budget. Because that has been, has not been submitted yet, correct?
No, it hasn't. But that's a good idea. Maybe we should move it.
I think that makes a lot more sense than being an I T.
Consultants and...
You're aligning the regular selectmen's budget, no?
Well, put one in.
We could add one.
Or just add one in. I think it makes more sense.
Take it out of I T.
Put it in selectmen.
Yeah, yeah. It just gives more ownership, I think, to the, e- even though I T's under the control of the selectmen, it's...
Right, you, you have to be the client.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that does make sense. Come up with something anyways.
Well, you want the school committee to come up with a, like, three people, and we'll come up with three people?
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't necessarily get an odd number committee, I don't think, because it's really just coming back with suggestions, it's not...
Right.
So it can be an even, even number from both sides. So, yeah, three's probably optimal, I, I would think, from each side. You have a six-member committee.
So administration and school committee members?
Yeah.
Six member, and I agree with Mary Gormly there with saying, I, I think we should have somebody from the outside. Because they'll see what we don't see, you know?
It would have to be a business, I mean, it wouldn't do any good to have a heavy I T person because that's just I T. I mean, so you, you need somebody that's, that's a real management consultant. You know, the, the, that's the, the area of expertise, not a specialty field. It, it's a generalist. So if you can find somebody like that...
I think we should definitely have at least one.
I do too.
If not two, one from either side.
And I think that if, you know, this is a, a public meeting and people are watching it on TV, and if anyone's at home watching this thinking that they might have something to offer or an interest in, in serving the community and, and supporting this venture, that might be great if they contact one of us, you know, the school committee or the board of selectmen.
When, when would you hope to have this committee up and running?
As soon as we can agree upon the members, let's, let's get it moving.
Could we say the first of the year?
Sure. That would make sense.
Yeah.
Glenn? I, I was waiting to hear from you anyways, Glenn.
Just while we're talking mainly selectmen and school committee. I, I might suggest, especially if we're looking at the, um, financial functions, you might consult with the treasurer to get someone from that office in as well. Because there are, um, functions that are there, and of course, the treasurer is an elected official, doesn't, uh, doesn't report to either the board of selectmen or the school committee, but certainly with respect to financial operations, there are a lot of things that happen in that office that don't happen elsewhere.
Right, that's a good point.
And the interplay between...
Something like Diana or something like that.
Our, our office at the schools, Amy's office in accounting and, and the treasurer's office is a, is a place where we really have to get some, um, some communication about how things work there, because, uh, I, there's, I think every reason to believe we could do some things a little differently in the, in the way those three offices communicate.
Okay, good point.
So how should we leave this with the amount of people we need?
Well, that would make a seventh person, I guess, or if, if we bring somebody in, unless we...
Make it a seven-member committee?
Well, I, I think certainly there, there should be, if, if we, if we bring somebody from treasurer, which I agree with Glenn, that probably does make sense, because that whole payroll function and, you know, cash receipt function happens there.
Treasurer, selectman, town accountant.
Yep.
Town administrator, two from the school committee.
So the two from the school committee would be probably Glenn and one school committee member, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want a slight, you know, so, I mean, I, I don't want it necessarily to be a heavily-weighted town side either. So, you know, however you want to balance it out, balance it out, but, and, and you don't want it too, too unwieldy either. But I do agree with Glenn, we do need some, somebody from treasurer. So that means dropping somebody off from the selectman's side.
Right.
And you, you need Amy.
I think we need Ann Marie, and we need...
Yeah. Yeah, the question is, do you need a selectman necessarily on that committee?
Not necessarily. I mean, I, I think those are the key people, Amy, someone from the treasurer's office, and whether it's Ann Marie or Michael or another designated.
How many is that?
And then Glenn, and a school committee member. That's five.
And two school committees.
If we just did one, and then, well, that's what we had said earlier, and then that would be...
That's five.
And then some...
And then you want a citizen?
And then you want a citizen?
Community.
Oh, and a citizen, that's right.
Yeah, is there anybody else there?
So, that would be six. Amy Dexter, Jim McGoliffe, town administrator, or designated, Glenn Pavlicek, school committee member, and a citizen at large.
And if we are, as Ms. Donovan said, rock stars out there and everybody listens to us, then maybe, maybe somebody will hear us.
Is that okay with...
Everybody in agreement with that? It's pretty balanced, right?
And I think those citizens should contact Anne Marie, begging.
Well, there's some content, right?
Absolutely. Just in case people didn't hear, anyone who's interested should contact Anne Marie. She's begging at townmilton.org.
Perfect. Okay, I'm excited.
Very good.
Very good.
Let's just get started.
Thank you.
We'll see in a few minutes.
Can I just ask, is, will there be a charge from the joint, or how would this committee be?
Well, we'll have some kind of a charge. It's just a matter of, I think we'll come up, you know, whether it's Leroy or myself, or, you know, come up with some kind of a charge, or, or somebody will. But I, I think it has to be a little bit broad, because you don't want to, you don't want to tie the hands of the committee too, too much, you know, so you want them to explore anything that makes sense.
So, would that be, I think Mary's asking, is that something that would be voted on? I mean...
Yeah, I, I would say, yeah.
I would think so.
Once we appoint the committee, our side will, will, will give a charge, and you should too, and it should be the same charge, so we should agree on that, I think.
Okay, so we'll be contacted on that.
So, you, yeah, so you and Leroy can get together. Okay, number 16 on the agenda is something new. That's the town administrators' report. It's kind of like something like the superintendent's report on the school committee. Anne Marie?
Yes. I would like to report out that Michael Blanchard has been approved by both the board of selectmen and the personnel board...
Yay.
...as the new assistant town administrator. Yay. Looking very forward to his start date, December 2nd.
Now, there will be a transition process, obviously, but...
There will be a transition. He will, he will come up here on December 2nd, but he will still support the board of health until such time as they name a new health director. But I'm looking, the office is looking forward to working with Michael. He will really enhance our office, and I think he will be very pleased.
And take somebody who won't go like you?
Yes. One other item I'd like to talk about is an event that is going to be happening on December 1st at the Concord Baptist Church, and it's celebrating World Aid Day. They will be releasing balloons up in the air, remembering of, well, people got a pass from this terrible disease. So, it is a celebration again on December 1st at the Concord Baptist Church. And last, but most importantly, this is very exciting news. I'm so happy to share this with the board and with the town citizens listening, that we had a conference call last week with Standard and Poor's, because we will be going out soon for bonding, and got the call today from Standard and Poor's, that we have been upgraded from a double A community to a triple A community. And that is the highest rate that you can receive, so...
Our bonds are worth more than the federal government.
The methodology and the criteria used to, and it, it, it makes it more transparent and it shows the risk that the community will bear a lot better. And according to Standard and Poor's, the triple A bonding is the highest rating that can be achieved in the rating scale. They said that based on the categories rated by the new criteria, Milton's budget flexibility was strong and continued goal to build reserves between eight and 15 percent. Budgetary and management performance was also strong with the positive results in recent years. Liquidity was also strong with sufficient cash reserves to meet ongoing operational needs. The economy category was strong with Milton's proximity to Boston and our high wealth and income levels in the town. Debt and contingent liability, liabilities also ranked very strong despite the pension and OPEB liabilities that we still need to address. So, they were quite pleased that they were able to deliver this good news to us. And I do want to thank the financial team that sat in on this conference call, which was Jeff DeHambly, Amy Dexter, Jim McGoliffe, Bill Clark, and Glenn Pavlicek. But I do want to say that this new rating is due to present management and prior management teams in the town.
So, does that mean, you mentioned it earlier, Tom, that we can get a better interest rate?
Yes, yeah. And, I mean, you can't tell what it's going to be, because that, that, you know, based upon the market, but, but there, there was certainly a lower interest rate to a triple A bond than a double A bond, yeah, yeah.
So, it decreases our cost of borrowing, and, and I, I, it's great news. I want to echo what Anne Marie said. I think it's attributable not only to the current people who are involved in our current management, but also our former management, our former treasurer, our former town administrator, but all beyond that, really to a lot of volunteers who served this town very well, prior warrant committees...
Right.
School building committee, there's so many people that you could name that really are responsible for the town bond rating...
Yep.
...being what, being what it is, and that's wonderful news, and it's been a team effort over the last so many years that, that, you know, that we've gotten this rating.
I think over the past several years too, that, that really tight budgeting, you know, and, because if you think about it, you know, we've, we've maintained ourselves pretty well through some very severe economic times. You know, from a community that generally has overrides every three or so years, it's been a good long time since one. I mean, we're feeling some of the pinch right now, but, but we, we have managed our budgets pretty well. And at the same time, we've managed to put away reserves, that the, the warrant committee and, you know, and, and the administration has made an effort to, to, you know, start funding stabilization funds and capital and operating, you know, we've even got a formula to do that now. So, you know, those kinds of things are good.
So, will, will our bonding interest rate automatically go down, or is this something we have to refinance?
Well, you wouldn't, you can't refi, well, you can refinance your bonds, and we might refinance some bonds, but, but the way, when bonds are issued, the refinancing is calling, calling the bonds. So, they're, generally when you write a bond, it can only be called at specific times. We do have a couple of bond issues that are up for call, I think next year, or is it this year?
That's what this call was, was for, because we are recalling 2006 bonds.
Right. So, so those were issued at, at a higher interest rate, even without the triple A rating.
When you say, when you say calling, that does...
That means, that means basically paying them off. Issue a new debt to pay off the old...
Okay, so it's calling the note?
Yeah.
But you can refinance it?
You're refinancing them, basically.
Right.
But, but you are actually, you are actually paying them off, and there are various ways to do it with, with a sinking fund kind of arrangement.
This one that we answered the call for was for 2006 bonds, and then we will again have to do another conference call in February, because we will be going out to bonding again for the 2013 capital projects.
So, if, and there are different ways to do it. If we wait till the bonds are callable, then, then it's merely a, it's, it's a simple process of a bond issue, and then you pay off the old debt, replace it with new debt that's at a cheaper interest rate. The other way is if you were concerned with the interest was starting to go up, you could do the, you could do that bond issue earlier than the call is, and just kind of set that money aside, and, and you wait till, you know, you basically invest that money, and, and you wait till the bonds are callable and then pay them off. So, it's...
And of course, you'd, you'd only do it on the, on the big bonds, to make it worthwhile with closing costs and...
Yeah, it has to be a big issue, yeah, yeah. Well, fortunately or unfortunately, I guess, most of our debt that's callable is over the levy limit debt. It's, a lot of it's school, building...
School, the school building.
Debt.
That's with the 2006 debt.
So, it really doesn't free up much from the operating budget in terms of debt, a little tiny bit, but not much. But it does save the, it does save the taxpayers some money, because their, their override, their, their debt exclusion override goes down.
And not only warrant committees over the past 15 years, but town meeting members too have really focused on the importance of the stabilization fund, the capital stabilization fund, and building up reserves, and, you know, every now and then, there's an effort to take money out of a stabilization fund. It hasn't happened recently, but it's so important that we have it and that town meeting has placed a, a lot of importance on keeping that.
Good.
Congratulations.
Well done.
And that's it for my report. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. And I just have a couple of things on the chairman's report. One of the, the big issues over the last number of months is the airplane noise, airplanes flying over people's heads going into runway four. And of course, there is a committee out there that's making the calls every day and objecting So, I contacted the four districts in Dorchester to arrange meetings, namely the Lower Mills, Cedar Grove, Pope's Hill, and Port Norfolk Civic Associations. Unfortunately, over the last couple of months, we couldn't get in, because we wanted the, the new mayor of Boston to attend. So, we kind of postponed it for the last few months. And now that Marty Walsh is the mayor-elect, and he's from Dorchester, we met with him a couple of weeks ago, and he has expressed an interest in showing up at all of these civic associations in January. It's not going to happen in December, after he takes office. I think it'll be great to have Marty Walsh on board with this, because after all, Logan Airport is in Boston, and he claims that he, he'll be able to make the phone calls that we can't make. So, that's where we are with that. We were, happened to be in East Milton a couple of weeks ago, and I met Paul Travers, and he was showing me about, he was showing me a tree that fell down outside the sovereign bank. So, I said to him, "Come on, let's walk into sovereign bank." We walked in, we met the manager, and I said, "Will you donate a tree for the outside of this building?" And they came back to us the next day and they said, "Yes." And so, we decided, and I presented it to my fellow selectmen, that we should, we should almost go around to every business over there and ask them would they donate trees, or even the public. I talked to Joe Lynch tonight, our DPW director. He said that if anyone is missing a tree outside their house and they feel they want to donate it, all they got to do is go to one of our vendors in town, purchase the tree, bring the receipt to Joe, and he'll arrange to have it put in immediately. So, I wanted to get that out to the public. Finally, council on aging.
That is tax deductible too, if you donate.
And it is tax deductible, yeah.
And we don't have the money in the tree budget anymore in DPW, so the town used to pay to replace some of the trees, but we, that's...
It gets thrown in the capital budget, or it gets thrown as a capital request every year, and it kind of gets...
By the wayside a few years ago.
The council on aging this Thursday morning at 9:30 for any seniors that are around, so not looking at anyone in particular. I'm actually, last year I did it as well. I'm going to go up and talk to the seniors for about a half an hour and give them question and answer, period. So, according to Mary Ann Sullivan, the seniors are excited about it, and so am I. That's this Thursday morning at 9:30. And that's the end of my report. And I will now make a motion to enter executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto school resource officer and collective bargaining, Consolidated Facilities memorandum of agreement, believing that having these conversations in open session would compromise the bargaining position of the body, and to return to open session to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen? Yes, we're in executive session.
Can we ask some questions?